4:03, so we'll call the special meeting of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission to Order. Yes, is there, are there any revisions to the agenda? Okay. Eric, do we need to formally move to accept the agenda, or are we?
Um.
A little less informal here?
Yeah, I mean, you could, or you could just declare it.
So moved.
Thank you, Eric. All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved.
Yep, and we don't have any minutes or anything, so yep, you can go straight into the work session.
Okay, with that, I think, is it okay if I turn it over to Nick and Brian then? All right.
Okay, we'll go ahead. That's us monopolizing the screen, by the way. I just thought it would be easier if we kind of tip through. Can everybody see the handouts that were sent to you then?
Yeah.
Hopefully you had a chance to kind of look at them, and I just want to kind of tick through them so you know what you've got in front of you. We didn't spend much time last time going through these, but we'll spend the majority of today's meeting going through the handouts. But let's go ahead and just start with the role. I know some of you were involved in the meeting earlier, our first meeting, where we kind of kicked this off, and we talked a little bit about your role in the process, so I just kind of want to run through that real quick, just so that you understand that you have a very important role in the process of updating the comp plan as the planning commission. I know sometimes it runs contrary to what people understand. You're not just the zoning commission, you're also the planning commission, and so certainly you've got a very important planning role, and what the city does is looks to you as a commission to prepare a draft document that then gets sent to the city council.
Obviously.
Many steps that'll occur between now and then, and we'll get you through it. That's what Nick and my job is to do, is to walk you through the process of getting a draft put together. There will be formal hearings, not unlike your usual zoning actions, but we will also go back to that task force and visit with them as well, too, and you'll see some other public input opportunities during the process as well. So really, your job is no different than when you look at Platts, or you look at rezones. You will be asked to look at the document and provide a recommendation to city council after a hearing at some point in time. Our job is to get you through it. So that being said, what we've got today is, let's just go ahead and walk through the task force material, so let's hop down to that second bullet. And let's just spend time kind of going through this, again, not, not going to read them to you. Hopefully you had a chance to read through them a little bit. If you haven't, that's okay as well, too, because you can just back up and, and take a little time, but what you're going to see is, if you recall, that task force that we worked with was about forty names throughout the community, with various positions, some were general public, some had, you know, bankers and doctors and, you know, school, and just, we just had a nice cross-section of, of persons who participated in three meetings, starting in mid-November and concluding just before the holidays and, or Christmas time, and we had three meetings, each one lasted at least an hour or some, about an hour and a half, and we ran them through a series of questions in, in certain areas. Those certain areas coincide with the state law in terms of what we need to make sure we've addressed or covered in your comprehensive land use plan update. So these categories that you see an attachment for are the categories that marry up then to state law. And what Nick and I did was, we just asked them a series of questions that were just intended to seed discussion, and so what we did was ask what was highlighted of those task force, and we provided those ahead of time, collected them ahead of time if we got them, if they were done, and then shared them with the group, and always making sure that we walked through the handouts with that task force as we collected the information. So as you might imagine, if you get forty people in the room together, you're going to have differing opinions, and so if you read through some of these, you're going to see that some of them contradict each other. That this person thought that, you know, it was okay to develop literally anywhere in town without regard for preservation of agricultural land. You're going to see then that somebody else had the exact opposite opinion, that they looked at it and said, "No, I don't think so. I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that there are, you know, large tracts of agricultural ground still in the community, and it's okay if some of that remains agricultural." We'll just view it as being in a holding pattern. So that's the first thing, is that you probably will see some contradiction. The other thing that you will see is that in the bullets, so what's in red in bullets are the responses, and we put them in verbatim, typos and everything, and so we didn't want anybody questioning the credibility as to whether or not we included their comments. The only exception that we told them that we would not include a comment would be if it was personal, or vulgar, derogatory, or something like that, and again, we didn't have any of those issues. So that's the other thing you'll notice is that we put them in there whether they contradicted, and, and we're bringing it to you now as the planning commission to really sort through these comments, and then what we'll do is we'll use them to update your goals and your policies in the current plan. Likewise, to set out the purpose in the plan, and we'll talk about that in a little while. The other thing you'll notice is that on each handout, there's a box, and the box will have a smart planning principle, and sometimes a smart planning element or guideline. Again, that's your connection back to the state law, so that you know, okay, why would they ask me these questions, or why did we ask the task force these questions? Well, we're relating it back to state law, so that we're consistent with what was expected in state law. The nice thing, again, this, that's my opinion, but the nice thing is, we don't have to send your plan into the state. They do not check them, they do not grade them, they do not evaluate them, and so really, it's incumbent upon us to make sure we're consistent with state law, and so what we're doing is literally putting it right in front of the task force, and, and now we're doing likewise, putting it in front of you as a commission. And then the last thing you'll notice is that some of the comments that we received don't pertain to land use planning. The example that if you were on, on the line a little earlier, you may have heard me make a comment to John about, you know, the commission isn't going to be concerned about hiring a city administrator. You know, that was a comment we received because the questions were open-ended enough, and, and it's just, in this case, we may not include that information in your land use goals, because this isn't perhaps the appropriate document for that kind of a goal statement. It might belong more importantly in a strategic plan for the city or something of that nature, but again, we tried not to cut off any of the commentary or discussion, so some of the things just may not fit in terms of land use planning, and that's really our charge is to put together a land use document, so we've got to kind of pick and choose. So as you, as you work through it, you'll see what's highlighted in yellow are the questions we asked the group in those meetings, and then the bullets in red are their responses back to us. And so, again, you're going to see that there's a wide array of comments from preserving agricultural land in the city limits to, you know, if it's in the city limits, it, you know, it should be considered to be open for development. And so you're going to, we're going to have to kind of weigh through these comments as we move forward, but we just wanted you to be aware of, of the questions that we had asked and tried to highlight them for you, and then just really tried to give you some input. So if you think about it, kind of from a parallel standpoint, or maybe a metaphor standpoint, is that the task force is almost acting like your planning and zoning commission. They're providing you some recommendation and some guidance in written form for you to use as you see fit, with the idea being that you'll send along, you know, the best document you can up to the city council. So you'll see that there are references made to right to farm, you'll see references about annexation. You'll even see people that will make comments that say, "I'm not familiar with, you know, the concept of ag preservation," or "I'm not familiar with, you know, soil sciences," or "whether or not we've got a lot of erosion." And so you're going to see kind of some comments that we as a commission have to kind of glean through, and then let those impact and draft goal statements, and so you're going to see that we ask really, in most cases, about four or five questions of each of, of each of the different topics, and so we tried to keep the, the conversation going. So we asked them also, "Is enough being done, do you think, to protect or preserve natural resources?" So not just necessarily agricultural land, but those natural areas. That would, that could be floodplain, could be wooded, could be steep slopes, could be any of those kinds of natural features that may exist in the city limits currently. So then, the next question we asked was then, "Is enough being done then to protect those areas?" And this is where we got kind of a wide variety of opinions. And then, "What else should we be doing to protect the environmentally sensitive areas?" And these are the areas that probably are not the best for development. Those are the things that show up in your staff reports that Eric and John and Seth will more or less draw to your attention that may be issues. And they may not be infrastructure-related issues, they may be more related to the natural characteristics of a particular site. Is it in the floodplain? Is it wooded? What do the soils look like? If you're familiar at all with county zoning, it seems like we have a bigger discussion usually around soils when it comes to county zoning, but it does come up in city zoning as well, too. So, but again, you're going to see that, if you haven't had a chance, but go through the, these things, just go through the bullets. And then, the last question we really asked was, "How do you feel about directing growth to certain areas?" Because after all, if you think about it, you may not own the land, but your plan does help direct growth and types of growth to different parts of town. Which areas are commercial, which areas are residential, and so you're directing growth. So we're asking, "Do you think it's appropriate for the community to be doing that?" And so you're going to get a little bit of mixed message, a little bit, but you'll see that by and, by and large, that it makes sense, that the city does need to have a plan, that does need to look forward. It, it may not necessarily need to be parcel-specific when it comes to the plan. After all, your zoning ordinance is parcel-specific, and you can let that zoning ordinance dictate the details. And so that's kind of the ag piece. Did anybody have anything, any questions, anything jump out on the ag stuff?
Um, Brian?
Yeah, Eric.
Yeah, this is Eric. Um, I wanted to know what the, what the various shades of red were, the lighter red versus the darker maroon colored red? Was there any reason why they were different shades of red?
I don't think so, Eric. I don't think there was any difference. It might have just shaded differently as we picked it up off of people's sheets.
Okay.
I just did that to separate each individual's answers.
Okay.
So you'll know then that, if you look at it, that right here, this person gave us two bullets, but that this next person gave you four. Helps Nick kind of keep his house in order in terms of, did he get all the comments on the sheets?
Okay.
All right, thanks, Nick. All right, so let's take a look a little bit about collaboration. So that's a little bit about ag and natural resources. Collaboration is working together, and we have a lot, a lot of examples of how the city of Waterloo works with other entities, whether they be other local governments, school districts, other agencies or entities that are formed by contract, like the landfill, or fire service, or the hazard, hazardous substances, the North Iowa Response Group. Just, there are plenty of examples. Intercog, the organization that Nick and I work with, is a 20E entity. That's a reference to the Iowa code, by the way. It just allows local governments and agencies to work together, and what it does is it sets up a template or a framework for allowing a contract to be drawn between those levels of government. But what we asked him was, can you think of, you know, examples of collaboration? Obviously, there are many different examples. Is this all-inclusive? Not necessarily, but just know that there are lots of examples. I know sometimes when Nick and I work on these with communities, a community may have difficulty seeing the forest through the trees. You know, I don't, I can't even think of any ways that we work together, or I can't think of any collaborative efforts that we make, when in fact, there are all kinds of them. If you sit down and just think about it, there are all kinds of collaborations that the community makes in an effort to provide primarily services for its citizens. So just know that, that that's out there as well, but there are lots of examples. How do we make them better? Who are we missing? Are there other things that we can work together on? And so we kind of asked open-ended questions in that direction as well. Are we missing some ideas? How do we foster that or support it? Again, that's a little bit, question three is really not a far stretch from two. And then, how do we, because efficiency and transparency and consistency is important, how do we try to improve that a little bit? Again, that's where, you know, that example I used about the city administrator, that may not be in your purview as a land use body. It's not in, in Nick's, in my purview, as, as the gentleman who are going to work with you on putting together the plan. But it was an open-ended question, and it was a thought that, that, that someone provided to us, and so we did pass it along. Again, it is a legitimate form of public input when you sit down with, with forty different individuals across three meetings and ask them open-ended questions. So, and then what areas, what are the key concerns? And really, again, that's a, a reach back to the Iowa code. The Iowa code always says with each of these topics that we should address, what are the key concerns or needs? And so that's why you'll see a lot of these handouts end with that question, is they want us to reach back and, and really take a look at, you know, what are some of the things that you see on the horizon? Anything in collaboration? Okay. Hop over to character. So what Nick and I did was, community character, as we described it to them, was really, what makes Waterloo unique? Answering the questions, "Why do you live here? Why is your business located here? Why do you choose to live here? What makes it unique?" And again, we're, we're focusing or trying to focus as best we can on positive things. What quality of life amenities are out there? Sometimes you hear that term "quality of life", and so what quality of life benefits, what quality of life amenities does the city of Waterloo have that keep you here as a resident or a business owner? Or whatever it is that, that keeps you involved in Waterloo. So what we did was, we asked, "What makes Waterloo unique in your eyes?" And so we got another long list of, of things that really are amenities that relate to the community, and, and Nick even highlighted for the, for the task force, you know, "Here's how we look at quality of life." It, it's a little bit self-defined, but at the same time, quality of life is something that answers that question. "Why, why are you here?" And so, again, we, we even tried to kind of coach them a little bit, and we received a, a number of, of really good responses, many positive responses. Again, you know, going back to that comment that I made about, you know, in, in communities, we struggle sometimes with seeing the forest through the trees. And, and Nick and I both run into that, as we've done this process in a lot of communities, is, you know, people get a little bit down on themselves, and so once we list all of these things that are going on, again, not a comprehensive list, but once we list those things, what comes to mind is that there are really a lot of positives in the community. If you just kind of let yourself, you know, be taken in by it and make a list, I think you'd be impressed. So, long list. What quality of life assets are out there? And so in this case, what we were doing, where we were asking about what investments, if you will, assets exist in Waterloo that stick out to you? What attracts people here? What do people do? And so we got, again, a long list of items that came forward to us. Some of them are repetitive, some of them got mentioned more than once. We didn't do the vote tally, because again, we didn't want anybody to lose some of their identity if they gave us an answer. But again, very positive list of things. Again, some of them double up, but that list would still be very long, even if we aggregated some of the, the doubles and the triples. So where do we need a little work? And so we asked the question, "Where are our challenges?" And so, again, we got a, a list of some things that, again, from commercial use attraction to, you know, what are some of the place-making things that would brought, draw people here uniquely to Waterloo? And so, again, one of the things you'll notice as you go through these is, you know, Nick and I thought we were being clever by asking questions of the group, when in fact, they turned around and asked us questions back. And so you'll see there about five bullet points down there on the page, you know, what needs to happen at Crossroad Center. So they posed the question back to the group. You know, what's going to happen out there, you know, with the loss of tenancy and, and those kinds of things? What's going to happen? What do we think it might be someday? And so we did get some questions that were, that were sent back to us as well, too. And probably not intended for just Nick and I, but certainly, more importantly, for you as the planning commission and your staff. You know, looking ahead, what happens? Again, this plan is intended to be general. You know, it's not a post-it note, you know, like I put on my desk of the things I need to try and work on or get done today. It's intended to be a long look. Your current plan was put in place in 2003, and, you know, we're just coming up on twenty years. So it's intended to be very general, with the idea that more specific plans would be for areas or, or different kinds of tasks or functions, and so this is just really a look at, you know, what else might be out there as a task force that we want to work on as a community? And then what can be done in terms of just the character? Again, we got a list there as well. Some of which pertain, some of which do not, as you might guess. But we did get, we did get a list. Any questions about character? So those were the three we covered in the first meeting, the second meeting, which was, I think, the third of December, if I remember correctly. We covered a number of topics that were primarily physical in nature. So the first three topics, you know, agriculture and natural resources are physical, and you can, you can see them, you can touch them, but collaboration and community character are a little harder to get your hands around sometimes. They can be a nebulous term, if you will, or maybe even self-defined. In this case, in the second meeting, we talked a little bit more about physical features, things that you could point to, things that were obvious, things you could see or you could touch, things that you use. And so we started the conversation with community facilities and services. So if you think about, you know, what, what's the condition and availability of things like schools and libraries and other kinds of physical facilities, and so we just tried to kind of seed the thought in their mind of, okay, this is what we mean by facility, and this is what we, and we'll talk about services here in a little bit, that we just ask them, you know, "What do you see in terms of condition?" And so you're going to see that, you know, some are, are absolutely great, outstanding. There were a couple listed in there that were, "We need some upgrading, and we need some remodeling," like Hope Martin Theater was one that came up. And you'll see that, you know, the facilities that the school teaches through are generally viewed as, as one that investments are continuously being made, and they are a positive asset to this community. And so you'll see those comments as well. Of course, we, we've got to get the, we've got to get the COVID-19 discussion going in there, too, because that has played a role. I mean, after all, this is how we're doing our meeting today as a result of COVID, but you'll see library, you'll see all of those facilities, if you will, and you'll see that we even got some paragraph answers. So as you look at some of the answers that we've got, you'll see that we actually got pretty lengthy responses from folks about some of these, some of these ideas or some of these questions that we posed to them. about some of these, some of these ideas or some of these questions that, um, we posed to them. Again, then we switched from those types of facilities to, um, more the recreational type facilities. And and those comments, um, generally all very positive. Uh, the one theme we did hear in some of these is the concern for ongoing maintenance. That that is going to be something that the community, as it has invested in these uh, types of amenities, will always have to be aware of of the maintenance factor that goes along with it. So, um, the cost of operating this, whatever it is, a park, a trail, a swimming pool or or whatever it might be, um, has an initial cost, but it's also got a life cost as well, too. So, um, as you see these answers, you'll see that some people are really looking at these things down the road as well, too. And again, that's what makes kind of this process fun for Nick and I is that we get to interact with the task force who, uh, will be made up of persons who are very detail oriented, but are also very, very um, uh, long-minded in terms of of looking at this down the road. So, again, you'll see some, some really good comments. You'll see the historical and cultural amenities. We, we tried to kind of pose questions to them about the amenities in the community that are historical in nature or cultural in nature. And then we ask some of the services, you know, from the standpoint of, we started with fire and law enforcement um, as well, too, and and just ask the questions about those services. And then we ended with, what are some of the key concerns? Um, and so you'll see that the the answers range kind of in that all encompassing question of, I'm not aware of any concerns, too. Um, you know, are we willing to continue to make the investments in these kinds of infrastructures and assets? Um, that we remain competitive? A question really for all of us, right? So, uh, a question for the policymakers, the city council. Um, the folks who work on the budget, who work on the capital improvements program. Any questions about facilities?
Yeah, um, this is Eric again. I had a question about, um, COVID nineteen and the timing of your meetings. Was was this done during the time of COVID nineteen? So this was done, you're talking about like, uh, November and December of of this past year, two thousand twenty, where COVID nineteen might have come up as an issue? And so how are we aware about how that changed the answers? Because of COVID nineteen and where the answer would have been different had it been two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, when a pandemic wasn't a concern?
Um, I, I don't know that we asked the question, would your answers be different, Eric? Um, the whole process that we managed was different. It was done this exact same way. And it wasn't Zoom, it was go to meeting, which is just a different, you know, a different version of of a video conference call. Um, made it a little harder to get feedback, uh, from the folks verbally, I think. Um, but what we did was we didn't collect any of the materials from them at the end of the meeting. We always gave them until the next meeting to submit them. So if they wanted to take their time, um, think through things, uh, we allowed them to submit them to Nick, myself and staff um, electronically after the fact. So we didn't shut off the discussion, um, per se. We actually left the discussion open so that people could submit throughout. So that piece, I think, probably was maybe a little bit better. But I think just doing these electronically creates challenges at times, too. So, um, again, I don't, I don't know if the impact was huge, but, um, just maybe different.
Okay. And so here's my follow-up to that. How do we? How do we take into account that COVID nineteen is a temporary situation where, you know, we're targeting twenty years down the road. So in like two thousand fifty-three, COVID nineteen won't be an issue at the next time that that planning commission is doing something like this, where their issues are going to be, um, different than what they are now. Um, and and so I guess, how do we account for the fact that this is a temporary situation when you're looking, when you're looking at a time span that's twenty years?
Yeah, what we're going to do is, as we work with you to write the goals and the objectives is we'll, we'll right-size it, Eric, in terms of the the conversation so that, um, yeah, we're going to have probably a recognition of what was going on at the time of planning. Um, but we're still going to put forth, you know, sound uh, goals and objectives with regard to land use that may or may not be impacted by COVID or whatever the next, you know, pandemic is down the road. God forbid that it comes during the life of this plan, um, but you never know. So what we're going to do is limit our our, uh, conversations to making sure people are aware of what was going on. Um, but we're not going to flood the plan with it either. And so we're going to make sure that we look at things kind of through our land use glasses so that you, as the commission and your staff have a plan that works outside of a COVID nineteen or a pandemic type of environment or arena.
Yeah, because I was just assuming, as my last comment, I was just assuming the things that are closed now because of COVID nineteen, like the library is closed now. They're going to be open in two thousand, whatever, two thousand fifty-three. So that's a, that's how COVID nineteen is not going to be a thing in the future in that way.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, and at the same time, COVID nineteen might might actually affect the way things, you know, services are provided. I mean, look at, you know, the meeting we're doing today. Yeah, that may have a lasting impact on meetings down the road, perhaps.
Yep. I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, folks? Okay, we'll talk a little bit about hazards. This is probably one of our easier ones to work on. It's it's hard to discuss, but, um, because it obviously has an impact. Um, hazards, whether it be natural hazards or the COVID nineteen pandemic, um, or whatever it might be. Um, but the fact of the matter is, is that, uh, the county, Black Hawk County, has a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. That's a mouthful. Um, but there is a countywide hazard plan that was assembled by, um, the county and cities and a handful of school districts. Um, and was just wrapped up in April, May timeframe of this last year and was put in place for a five-year period of time. And so what we did was, number one, we just made you aware of of there is a document out there. Um, if you're interested in it, um, there's an electronic version on our website under the publications tab. Um, the city also has an electronic version as well. I warn you, uh, like I warned the task force, if you do go look at that hazard mitigation plan um, and you read better off a paper, um, here's your warning, don't just hit print. Um, you will be there a long time. It is probably four hundred and fifty pages long. And there's a significant amount of color in the document, lots and lots of maps. And so I guess my advice to you is maybe start through it on the PDF, um, which is a manageable size and then be selective if you need to print some things. But there is a an appendix at the back that is tailored specifically for the city of Waterloo. Um, each jurisdiction has its own appendix at the back, so it re- it retains its their identities, their individual identities, whereas the front part of the plan is a countywide look. So what we did was, we just picked up and excerpted the goals of the the current plan with the idea being that, um, we're not going to substitute for a four-hundred-page plan. Um, the count plan just needs to be aware of that plan. It needs to be respectful of that plan. And then what we need to do from there is, um, we just need to cross-reference it. Again, we're not here to recreate the wheel. Um, we did ask a few questions about what hazards, um, exist or are perceived um, in the community. What do you see as hazard? And and as you might imagine, um, a lot of these were physical in nature. Go ahead. Okay, I thought I heard somebody jump on. So, um, and then how do we address some of these things? Again, some of these matters are taken up in the hazard mitigation plan directly and in detail. Um, some of them are new. And so, um, again, we didn't spend a tremendous amount of time on the hazards. Um, most notably just because, um, there's, there's this other document and and we didn't, uh, we didn't see seem to think that it needed to be adjusted or changed. Uh, again, it had its own process and its own procedure. Are there any questions?
Did you cover economic development and I missed it?
Nope, coming up.
Okay.
All right. So let's talk a little bit about, uh, then infrastructure is the next one. And so what we did then was, uh, in addition to facilities, the library, the schools, those kinds of things. We asked questions about specific infrastructure and utilities. Sewer, water, streets, those kinds of things. Um, with the idea being that, um, our goal was not to, um, find out that a particular street has potholes or it's got, um, you know, issues or the traffic lights aren't timed or whatever it is. Our goal was to really think in terms of long-term. What long-term infrastructure-type challenges, um, might the city be faced with? Whether it be, um, staying compliant on their sewer plant, um, a northeast bypass around the metro area. Um, you know, just all of those kinds of things. And we focused on, um, really, uh, all of the different utilities that are out there, knowing full well that the city of Waterloo may not necessarily control or manage those utilities. For example, um, natural gas and electric is Mid-Americans', uh, property in their purview. MediaCom is a, an internet provider or AT&T is a satellite provider, whatever it might be. We didn't venture into that. We just really wanted to know from the infrastructure and utilities that the city manages, um, what can we best effect or how do we affect it? So you will see then references. Again, we didn't expect everybody to be experts on infrastructure. But we certainly had experts in the room on infrastructure and we defined it for them. What do we mean by infrastructure? Again, the sixty-four-dollar term. And so we got, we got, you know, comments like cool lighting on the bridges. You know, in terms of of, uh, what we've got in the community to, um, pretty deep thoughts in terms of what we need to be concerned about, um, over a period of time. Uh, there were a few acronyms in there. So if you see that bullet right there that says lost, the lost has had a positive impact. Everybody know what lost is? Local option sales tax? So that's what that is. Um, and local option sales tax has had an impact on streets and roads. Um, but also, you know, on the school buildings. And so you look at, you know, what are some of the positive things? Again, you're going to see some references to some of those infrastructure, uh, amenities that the city may not be, um, in that market right now. You know, so you're going to see comments about broadband. You're going to see comments about cable and some of those other things. Um, but you're going to see, again, uh, where we get posed questions. You know, I don't hear much about the municipal water system, so I'm going to assume it's okay. You know, if you look at that report that we all get, right? We get a report on the waterworks every year, comes in your mail. Hopefully you take a quick look at it. You'll see that the quality of the water is very good um, in terms of of what the product is. So, um, again, questions that were asked of us. What might be missing?
Um, no, I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, just the, you know, I mean, right now they're looking at potentially, you know, citywide broadband or perhaps, you know, maybe a regional approach within the cities such as downtown or other areas. Um, you know, uh, you know, kind of something to what, you know, Cedar Falls has, um, you know, I mean, uh, you know, MediaCom, I here does, does an okay job. I don't know, they're a tad bit expensive, but um, got to look at ways, you know, where we can expand our broadband. Um, especially when it comes to, you know, um, long-term economic development and, you know, uh, maybe citywide, I don't know, that, you know, could be rather costly. Uh, maybe just downtowns, other areas, incubation centers, um. I don't know, but, uh, I think, yeah, the the city is looking at it right now. So, um, I guess it'll be interesting to see, you know, kind of like what they come up with, uh, in regards to recommendations and, you know, if there's a possibility to implement it, it's not going to be something cheap. It's going to be something extremely expensive. But, uh, um, I don't know, I could say, you know, CFU, their, their broadband is excellent and it's not overly costly either. So, just wanted to add that.
Yeah, CFU got customers in Waterloo. I've seen CFU trucks working out on the corner of Campbell and Ridgeway. Um, and I've heard that they do supply some businesses internet service, broadband service.
I believe so, yes. Or actually, we have a CFU backup for the city. MediaCom goes out.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't list that on my collaboration list, Seth. Maybe you don't want me to do that.
Or I don't know, maybe collaboration with MediaCom itself, you know, I, you know, maybe private, public type of partnership. Uh, you know, because I, I'm pretty sure MediaCom has spent a lot of money in terms of infrastructure and everything in order to bring internet to Waterloo. So I don't know, that could be an option as well, perhaps.
No.
I was just
Go ahead, Eric.
I was just assuming that, like, there are some kids who live in Waterloo but go to Waterloo, uh, who live in Waterloo but go to Cedar Falls schools because of where they live on the line between the two cities. So I just assumed it was something like that. I don't know about how people got, um, serviced from CFU and lived in Waterloo. I thought it was just something similar to that.
And I think there has to be a relationship, um, between the recipient and Cedar Falls in some way, shape or form in order for that to occur. There needs to be, I don't know, working relationship or some sort of connection for them to justify that.
Mm-hmm. Brian, this is Virginia. Um,
Yes.
At what point, um, do other commissions, other city commissions get involved in this process? I mean, were there, were there members on the task force for like the Human Rights Commission or Community Development? I know we have a few of our, our commission that are appointees from that, you know, the bigger, um, pool of commissions, but, um, were there people like on the school board who answered these initial questions?
Yep, yep. We had, uh, Virginia, we had, uh, um, superintendent, we had persons from school, um, we had hospitals um, as well. Um, we had, uh, staff, so we had departments. Our intent is to also visit with the department heads as we move forward. Uh, they have a meeting that we plan to attend as well. Um, and so we've tried to kind of pull that in that way, just kind of by virtue of of, uh, I don't want to call it cross-pollination, but that's kind of what I call it is, um, you may be on that commission, but also on the planning commission. And so when we first were looking at setting up the task force, we looked at people who were playing multiple roles. In some cases, you may be a developer downtown and on the main street board. Um, you may be on the airport commission, but also own a business downtown. And so, you know, we kind of were, we're trying to kind of cut across a lot of those things, too. Um, by the, uh, task force invitations. Again, we left them open. The, the, uh, um, links and stuff were made public, so we didn't not let anybody participate either. If there was somebody and we told the task force, look, if you are uncomfortable talking about real estate, you don't know anything about real estate or housing or whatever it might be, you know, feel free to provide the information to someone who you think may be able to provide thoughts and opinions, or maybe you're not the most appropriate person. So, um, we encourage them to share if they sure wanted to. Okay. Is the screen, I've kind of been leaving it, is the screen changing then? Is the screen, I've kind of been leaving it. Is the screen changing then at all? Okay, let, let me. Do you see, um, can you see the economic development one?
The screen is not moving on your screen.
Okay. Let me restart it once. Let's see if we can get it to do that. How about now?
Yeah.
Can you see it now? Okay. Economic development?
Yes.
Okay, good. What I'll have to do, I think I've got to stop and start it. I can't just leave them all open. It's probably too many. Um, so Eric, here's economic development and you had asked a question. And so we had asked the group, you know, what is, what is the economic development strategy? Are you aware of an economic strategy? Do you perceive one? Um, what do you think would be important in terms of economic development? And so, what we did was we asked that, that open-ended question, and I know that's a kind of a philosophical question for people too, because economic development, you know, a lot of people equate that just really being primarily with jobs or employment. And so, um, rather than the broader term, which is community development, so economic development, planning, all those activities are part of community development. And so, um, which by the way, your community development department, we did have them involved as well too. Um, but we did ask about jobs and we did talk about, uh, job creation. And so, uh, the responses that we got that are here, um, you know, and we asked some open-ended questions, you know, what, what, what's the general feel of the economy? And we all hear about job openings that can't be filled. We hear about specific skills. We talk, uh, we've heard about jobs being open. Um, even in times of a pandemic, we're still hearing the same kinds of things from companies about needing employees, sometimes very specialized. But we are hearing still similar kinds of things. Unemployment obviously jumped dramatically. You know, we were in that two, three, four percent range, it seemed like. And then COVID came about in, in the state of Iowa and Blackout County jumped pretty dramatically, but it's fallen back. Um, but the fallback is really level when you, when you, uh, look at those numbers. It's not back down where it was before. And so, um, know that that still remains higher than it was. And so again, you'll see some of the comments that are made, you know, that, um, people have a feeling that, you know, businesses are still uh, going to other communities that may be nearby. Um, but you also see comments that are the opposite as well too. So sometimes it's a little bit of perception and that person's opinion. You know, could the city offer incentives for new development? I think the city already does work with developers, does work with Greater Cedar Valley Alliance. And so some of what uh, we hope we accomplished with the process with the task force was hopefully, um, we educated some of them. We, you know, gave people an opportunity to walk through some of those things that go on. All right. Then of course we get to the challenges, um, you know, what challenges do you foresee, um, with regard to economic developments? What, what should the city be focusing on? You know, with regard to jobs and job development. Again, got a kind of a litany of, of responses back, but you also notice that the responses we didn't get pages upon pages of responses. And so, um, we, we got a limited set of responses. So this topic may actually be perhaps a little uncomfortable for people to venture out into, or, um, everybody feels pretty like-minded about things. Um, or we just didn't get the, the ease of response back from people where they could just make a laundry list. Maybe they just, maybe they're uncomfortable answering, or maybe they don't know, and that's okay. Questions about economic developments? Now I'll stop that and we'll try to pick up on. There's housing. So, if you haven't been, all right, where did I go? There we go. Okay. Everybody see the housing sheet? Hopefully if you can't, you, you'll have a paper copy, but hopefully you can see it. Um, housing is a real concern for the community. And real concern in a lot of the communities in which Nick and I work, we work in a six county area and housing is certainly of concern, um, in a lot of different aspects in communities. Whether it be housing in a certain price range, whether it be housing of a certain type, whether it be housing in a certain part of town, whether it be single-family homes, whether it be, you know, zero lot line homes like townhomes and condominiums or apartments, um, or accessibility for housing or.
Bingo.
Or, um, really just a number of things. Housing is really, um, a push in a lot of communities. And I can tell you, um, and you probably know this as well as I do, that housing is a concern and is really becoming a focus for the city of Waterloo. Um, we have been working on a number of different projects and, and a, a number of different initiatives. Um, certainly your staff has, uh, worked on a number of different initiatives. Um, as you think about the things that may land on your desk as a commissioner, um, whether it be tax increment finance, whether it be tax abatement, which is the Cura and the Clara and all those other kinds of tools that you hear about. Um, whether it be writing or drafting policies that deal with infill development of housing, or whether it, it deals with workforce housing tax credits. Um, but housing is something that, um, is really on the radar, um, in Waterloo, but also elsewhere. And so this is a, an area that we spend a little more time on than as we move forward. Again, the other thing in full disclosure that I should tell you is that, um, we're working with city staff to finish up a housing needs assessment document, which is just focused on housing. So you've got this comprehensive plan that'll have a housing section in it. Um, and it'll be, you know, a series of pages rather than an entire document. That housing needs assessment is going to be a single document focused on dedicated to just housing. Looking at needs, looking at wants, looking at condition of units, looking at location, just all those kinds of things related to housing. And so we are just kind of in the final throes of working with staff um, in the city in terms of putting together that housing needs assessment. So you may hear about that as well too. But broadly, um, we ask the questions, you know, how would you describe housing conditions?
You want some more, Paul?
So again, we got a, a number of, of, uh, different responses. Um, you know, from, you know, tremendous here to maybe need to work a little bit in this area of the community in terms of there may be blight or there may be needs or there may be uh, needs for additional rental instead of home, you know, ownership. And so, um, again, all these factors with regard to housing. What types of housing? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, my question is for the housing needs assessment. You know, with my work with the Waterloo Housing Trust, have I seen that document before, a previous version of that document? Are we talking about the same?
Yep.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
All right. So housing choices. And then we ask about affordability. You know, what, what does the average, you know, what, what's the average rent? What's the median rent? What's the average home payment? And then does that reconcile then with the condition? And so we ask a lot of those kinds of questions in terms of, of affordability. Can, can somebody, you see the question, someone making $15 an hour can't afford much in rent? And so, um, you know, what do the rent look like? Again, we're going to provide you with, uh, background statistics on what property values look like and what rents look like and those kinds of things. So you'll have a pretty good handle in your plan of what those medians look like. And so, uh, again, we'll, we'll try to answer some of those questions, um, as best we can.
Brian, on, sorry to interrupt. On this area in particular, personally, I see this area being the most impacted right now by COVID. Will you, will you be able to present some, um, I guess data or feedback? Um, I mean, both, I guess I'm thinking more from like the rental perspective due to what COVID in terms of, you know, eviction moratoriums and things like that. And what, what, I know this is impossible right now, but like potentially what that might look like post-COVID for our community?
Yeah, it, it's something that we're going to have to address. I agree with you that COVID, you know, if there's an area that, you know, as Eric was saying, that the pandemic may have an influence on, uh, certainly it's housing and probably economic development when you look at jobs. And so, um, yes, the rent eviction, we're going to want to make sure that we've got some text in the document. Um, if nothing else, just to, to kind of serve as the cornerstone or, or to time lock us in as to, you know, this is the era in which we were doing this plan. And I, I think there will be impacts. I think, um, you know, the eviction moratoriums and those kinds of things are being extended now. Um, same with foreclosures, um, but we all know sooner or later that that's going to end. Um, and so what it's doing is perhaps pushing that impact just down the road. Rather than, okay, what's going to happen when that day comes? And, you know, we know that day is probably going to come. We know that, um, both the federal government and the state government are pushing dollars towards rent assistance, eviction protections, uh, foreclosure, you know, they're setting up programs. Um, again, what does that look like down the road? You know, will we have structures that were rental properties that may become vacant? We all hope not, um, you know, or will we see conversion of units? You know, single-family homes to rental. And so again, I, I, I agree with you. I think we're going to see an impact here and I think we need to talk about it. Um, as we move forward with you as the commission. You know, what do you think is going to happen? And I, the other area I think is jobs. You know, that economic development piece that we just talked about. Because jobs now I think could look different. You know, our organization, we own a building downtown. Um, we've invested in laptops and the ability to do these meetings this way. And kind of if you think about it philosophically, do you need a building even? Any longer? You know, as a business, do you need, you know, that, that investment, that infrastructure? At building that presence, you know, will it come back? Will people get used to it, you know, shopping and doing things online? All good questions. All good questions. I think we need to cover some of those. All right. Any question? Housing, just know that housing is really on the radar in the community. So just know that, that we need to make sure that we're sensitive to it. Um, but also know that there's this very detailed housing needs assessment that's being worked on as well too. So that will provide an inordinate amount of detail in terms of, of housing. But we need to make sure the two documents work together, right? That they coincide. That they're not working against each other. All right. So let's take a quick look at, um, then the land use piece, if I can figure out how to do that. Okay. All right. There we go. All right. So land use, again, this is probably, you know, if you break it down, we're really working towards what you as a commission work on most often. We are working on housing, we're working on economic development or commercial or industrial. Um, we are working on discussing land use and we're working on and discussing transportation. Those are, are those physical things. Infrastructure the same as well too. Um, but, but we're really working our way towards developing a land use map. So in your staff reports, um, you get that the staff provides to you on each one of the requests on your agenda. There's a relationship to the plan and you'll see that that relationship text uh, actually winds you down a little further and says it's consistent with the plan because and it's consistent with the future land use map. And so our job, part of our job as the commission is to develop the, an update to your goals and objectives, but also to that land use plan. And so that you have a document that serves as your foundation. If you remember that kind of that, uh, metaphor I used of, of, okay, the, the plan is really intended. If you remember that drawing where the comp plan is on the bottom and all those other documents are relying on it, kind of like a foundation. Well, this is kind of intended to be your land use foundation. And so, um, we're really getting at or striking at the heart of the matter when we talk about land use. You know, and we asked the group, you know, are you familiar with the plan? You guys as a commission see that in every one of those requests and you see the map and you know what it's about. Um, but we asked that the task force really is, as general public, um, residents of the community, are you aware of it? Do you know that the community has one? Do you know how they use it? Are you familiar with it? Um, have you looked at it? Do you know where to find it? And so, um, we were just kind of, of really just looking for an awareness more than anything. And as you might imagine, we got a little bit of, of all over the board from familiar, but um, also got some that said, I'm not really very familiar. Um, and if anybody asks you, well, what's the point of this comprehensive plan? If you're looking to sum it up in an easy fashion, um, probably the best description I've read is that, um, what the comp plan does is that it, uh, it sets out a physical direction for the community as a whole. It sets direction for physical development of the community as a whole. So it comprehensively, we're looking at the whole community. So that's really the intent of this thing is, is it defines physical development of the community as a whole. And you as a commission are always trying to fit those pieces together, aren't you? You're trying to marry a request that an applicant wants with the neighbors and fitting that use or that development into a neighborhood or into an area or on a block. And so, um, you are forever working on that particular role. We're just trying to provide you the background or a document that you can fall back to. And your staff helps you by putting together those staff reports and making reference. So they're trying to keep you consistent then, um, with regard to their recommendations as well as their reports with the plan. So they're trying to make sure that, that you're staying lined up with the plan. And we ask open-ended questions, where might development occur? Um, and again, we got a, a varying degree from what we call greenfield development, which would be undeveloped ground, agricultural ground to completely infill. Downtown infill redevelopment. And so, you know, yours is one to have to balance those thoughts. And so, um, certainly as you look at this, you probably will recognize some of these areas that as they're being developed right now, or maybe being redeveloped right now. And then where should we stay away from? You know, are there any areas we stay away from? You know, certainly this one is always is close to me is the flood plain, the floodway. Any, any of those kinds of areas, certainly if we can, can stay out of those, then we'll, we'll make things easier in the long run. And then we talk a little bit about some of the tools. Because your plan doesn't go anywhere by itself. It needs help. And what it calls on for help is zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, building code. It needs help and what it calls on for help is zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, building code, um, your tax increment finance or your urban renewal program, your Cura, your CLURA, which are tax abatement, um, all those policies, um, from infill development to workforce housing tax credits, all of those things are tools that work towards your plan. And you'll probably find that if you look at guidance for developing those documents, it'll tell you that those smaller plans, those area plans or those function specific plans need to be consistent with the comp plan. So you'll see a reference back to this document. And then of course, what are your, your key concerns? And there were some very specific concerns obviously listed there, um, to some very general concerns about balancing things. Um, and so, uh, again, not, not a surprise. And then the last thing that we talked about, um, with the task force was, let's see.
Transportation.
There you go. Last but not least, right? Again, this is, this is one of those that if you, if you look at these last two, transportation and you look at land use, um, they, you, you can kind of make the case, right, that they're a little bit chicken and egg, right? So the question, you know, becomes which came first? The paved road or the paved four lane road, um, or the interstate or the interchange? Um, or did the land use, you know, the amenity that the development come first then that created the need for transportation? So which one came first and which one came second? So, um, transportation wise, we asked the task force not to just focus on your car, um, but to also think about the other modes of transportation as well. So think about air and air service, think about bus and bus service, think about pedestrian, think about biking, think about all of the modes of transportation. And, and as you move forward answering our questions, again, our highlighted questions, um, keep those in mind. And so, uh, we ask general questions, um, is it safe, convenient, economical and efficient? And again, as you might imagine, we got kind of a litany of, of question or responses back um, from, you know, it's, it's generally very good to, you know, some things are, are just, you know, the, the quote on that bullet point about being deplorable, the streets being deplorable. So I don't know if they hit a pothole on their way to the meeting that day or what, but
I did.
Be, be that as it may, uh, you know, just kind of it, what it does is, is maybe it documents what you bring to the meeting itself. Um, because then right here, the streets are in good shape. So, you know, it's kind of our job to weigh those things. And it's not our job, it's not our job to decide if one of those is right or wrong. Our job is to talk about that we need to have adequate streets that are provided in a timely manner at the time of development or something of that nature, you know, so that's really what we're after. Yes, we may venture into discussing maintenance and that it's important that the city always remember that you've got a lot of existing streets. And so, um, going out and building new streets may not be the most desirable thing, you know, even from a financial standpoint. And so, uh, we will venture into that conversation, I would imagine. So then, again, we talked about all the modes of transportation. Even though some of us are, are pretty attached to our cars or our vehicles, um, there are lots of modes of transportation. We've all probably partaken of the trails and, and those kinds of things. But we ask them to talk about the bus service. We ask them to talk about air service. There's another area, if you're looking for COVID impact, right, on the air service? Because, you know, we lost out on air service for a long period of time and, and it's, 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 it's changed. And so the question then becomes, what do we foresee down the road with regard to air service? Um, is COVID-19 giving us a preview? I hope not, um, but you know, we need to, we need to think about those kinds of things.
Brian, did you have on your, uh, group of 40 people in your task force or whoever, did you have any people with disabilities? And I'm thinking in terms of both housing from the earlier part of the conversation, but in this part of the conversation, transportation, uh, use of the bus service by people with disabilities? And whether that is, you know, financially feasible? You know, whether they're breaking even or whether they can make money at their jobs using the transportation service and those kinds of things? Because most people with, most people that I know that use the public transportation, the majority of them, not all of them, the majority of them are people with disabilities already on my way comes.
Sure, you know, and or they're riding paratransit or the fixed route, either way, Eric, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Um, we, we did have Met Transit. Um, actually, we had the, the general manager participated in the process um, throughout as well too. So, uh, we talked about some of the other things that, uh, they are looking at, you know, route restructuring and some of those other kinds of things as well. Um, certainly if you watch the news in the last day or two, you know that there's now a federal mandate um, for any of these kinds of transportation that are on this list now that we have to wear a mask. And so, um, there was a little bit of, of attention drawn to that on the news last evening. And so, um, again, I think, Eric, you're right, we've got to always make sure that, that that conversation um, is a part of the conversation. We also did look or did have persons, Eric, that were part of the Waterloo Housing Trust Fund too. So
Okay. Um, Because I was, because I was just thinking as a, we need to have a service user that has experienced using that service instead of just saying, instead of the manager, the overall manager saying, well, everything's fine because I'm just great, my service is great. Because they're gonna say that anyways, anyways. Okay, end of my question.
No, that's okay, that's okay. And it's, obviously that's a role that Eric that you can, you can play in this conversation as we move forward with the commission. So, um, certainly can do that. So those are, real quickly, and then, um, just want to talk about the existing plan. Just in short order, I know you guys have been hanging on for an hour and I appreciate it. Um, but I just want to kind of point a few things out in the plan. Anything, jump out, hopefully you have a chance to look at these sheets, anything surprising? Anything not surprising?
As far as, as far as this list of, uh, feedback.
Yes.
I noticed, uh, no, we didn't really tackle much as far as the crossroads area in particular. Uh, it was only mentioned once and then, uh, the, the only other thing I noticed was, uh, there wasn't much talk about industry in, in any one area. That's all I got.
Yeah, no, thank you. Other observations? Otherwise, again, I hope you'll have an opportunity to take a look at them, kind of read through them yourself. Um, I, I find them interesting always when we do this, um, not just it's, you know, and Nick and I's profession, but, um, it's certainly, uh, I think interesting just to read people's perceptions, you know, what do you, how do you view this? Um, you know, do you see it the same way I do? Um, what do you bring to the conversation that maybe I'm missing? And so, um, as planners, you know, we kind of want to hear what, what those views are. And you're right, there wasn't a lot of discussion about industrial development. Um, Cody, and there wasn't a lot of discussion about, you know, specific to the crossroads area. Um, and so that conversation will be something that you as a commission then I completely embounce for your conversations as we move forward because, uh, as we indicated, we're going to be updating that future land use map. And we are going to talk about, you know, highest and best use and what do you see these areas developing, these areas that may redevelop? Um, these areas that may be greenfield development and what types of uses? And so, um, that conversation will definitely be a part of, of, uh, your commission working with us moving forward. So what I really wanted to do real quick, um, again, you guys have been troopers to kind of hang in. Um, but we gotta get started really on the right foot and, and wanna, again, I, I use this kind of cheap metaphor, this cheap illustration is, I view, I view this as a relay race, right? So if you, if you follow track and field or if you were involved in track and field or if you've just watched it, um, you know, there's those relay races and there's a baton. And so the task force took the baton and ran it the first leg and, and now they're giving it off to you. And so, um, you're just picking up their pieces and we're gonna discern what they've told us. May not be exact, um, it may not be all inclusive, but, um, we've got a job to do and our job is to work on, um, here's the purpose and the intent. And so if you looked at pa- pages, you know, like I, I think we talked about this last time a little bit. You know, if you were looking for Cliff Notes and you didn't want to go through all 75 pages, what pages would you look at? Um, you'd look at the purpose and the intent, you'd see, okay, why are we doing this? And you'll see that we've talked about it, but you know, what's the intent of this plan? Well, it's to be general, you know, when we did the 2003 document, we actually did a tiered or stair stepped development kind of a concept based on what services are available. Meaning where is at least expensive to develop first? Infill was, is the easy one, right? And then where those services are there. And so we had to identify areas and I'll show you those maps in a little bit. Um, we wanted balanced, we wanted public input friendly. Um, we wanted it to be accepting of growth. Sensitive to the needs, environmentally sound, we just wanted it to be a number of things kind of out of the gate. And so, um, you know, look at those couple of pages, um, if you would. And then I'm gonna just kind of jump past the stats um, and get you to some of the, uh, some of the maps and some of those kinds of things here quick. You're gonna see a lot of statistical information. Nick is working on these stats actually. Uh, working on these tables, working to update the information. And so we're working on that outside of these meetings so that we, we stay even with you, I guess, so to speak, that you're gonna help us with that purpose and that intent. And you're gonna help us, here's where kind of the land use doc starts is about on page. Uh, in the PDF, it's 49. If you're looking for the numbered page, the document page, it's about 44. So as you go back, you're gonna see that we start to develop our land use conversation. And the future land use conversation is right there then. And we look back at your 78 plan to work on the 2003 plan. Just like we're looking back at the 2003 plan now to work on the 2021 plan. So, um, we will take this as our look back. Um, but you're gonna see that we looked at services and we created a little scoring matrix. And based on different services and availability of services. And we scored, what we did was we just picked out different areas of the community, just polygons. And then we said, okay, which factors influence growth? Sewer, transportation and growth trends, those, those are easy, you know, 17 years ago to, to point at and say, those are the best indicators of where this town is gonna grow physically. And then we looked at some secondary factors and then some other things. Obviously flood plain, those kinds of things. And so we developed a little scoring matrix. Um, we're not talking about splitting atoms or anything like that. Um, we're talking about just looking at what's there in terms of use. It's really just like adding points to your staff reports. You know, how do you, if, if Noel or Eric or Seth or John hand you a staff report for rezoning? And they walk you through, you know, 15 or 20 factors? Are you putting a score or a yes or a no, or are, you know, public input? How are you factoring that in? So what we did was try to make it a little more objective just with scores, just to lead the conversation.
Okay, now I have a time question. Uh, when will the final plan be written? Will that be 2023?
No, it'll probably be done, Eric. Um, we're gonna have a, a draft probably put together this summer. With the idea being that we're gonna look at probably next autumn, fall, kind of in that neighborhood is, is our timetable.
Okay, so it's about, it's about the same, it's about the same number of years between 1978 and 2002? And then between 2000 and whatever, 2002, 2003 to now.
We'll be close.
Which is amazing, I'm sorry, but.
So then what we did was, we, we just took they, the areas of the community that were undeveloped or, or not completely developed. And then we just numbered them and then we scored them using that, those, that matrix, if you will, or those factors. And so what we did was then that helped us prioritize then where development may occur soonest or perhaps least expensive or most logically, whichever one of those terms you like. And so you'll see that there's tan area and that was the area that would probably be the easiest and the most economical to develop. And you'll notice that right here in the middle, infill development makes the most sense, right? Probably not surprising. Um, even though it wasn't scored or numbered, it has all the factors. And then we have area that is kind of that raspberry colored as being, having some of the factors for development, but maybe not all of them. And then that, that reserved area, meaning it's furthest out maybe from services, um, or just timing. And so, uh, what we did was we helped the city kind of prioritize where development may occur from a timing standpoint. And then ultimately, back to Cody's comment about, um, crossroads is then using that, there were 41 different areas. How do we develop then a future land use map for the city? This is a map that you see around, I see it when I go into the department. Um, the map hanging on the wall, the map being used, this is that future land use map then that the staff uses as you see requests, this is what they're referring to. And what, one thing jumps out on this map is being missing right now. Property lines, right? So, um, what this does is it, it's meant to be general. And so, um, your zoning ordinance is meant to have property lines and those kinds of things, but this is intended to be more general. And not necessarily something that is exact. So it ends up looking like that. Then as you kind of move forward to the plan, you'll see that, okay, how does Waterloo look or interconnect like a puzzle with its neighbors? Because you're part of a metro. So how does it connect with Evansdale? Or Cedar Falls or Hudson? Or even Black Hawk County? What do those edges look like? Edges a lot of times are the place where conflict can occur because after all, this is just a political boundary. You know, that is very minute in size. And so across the street, what does that land use look like? What's going on across the street? So what
Have we had issues with that? Have we had issues where Evansdale says, um, you know, we have a land use in this way and Waterloo says, no, that land use should be this, you know, this other way of using our land? And it's like, all you have to do is yeah.
And I'm not aware of any, I don't know, staff, if you want to comment on that?
Uh, this is Schrader, I would defer to Noel, but I, I'm not aware of any. I think when we last did this update, uh, we also kind of tried to work with them to, you know, generate input so that we could be, you know, as consistent as possible.
Okay, yeah.
They were, they were also part of the task force as well. We had, staff were elected from all of the jurisdictions. So, uh, the Hudson mayor and the clerk were invited, uh, the, uh, community development planning director from Cedar Falls. mayor from Evansdale. And so, and we had supervisors, board of supervisors. So we tried to, as Eric said, tried to include them again this time as well. So those are the the pages really, so as a commission, looking forward to your next meeting, what do we envision? Well, what we're going to do is is we want you to take some time on your own. Look at those comments that the task force presented you with. Look at some of these pages in the plan, the ones that you see most frequently. There are goals and policies that also show up as well that you're going to see that we want you to take a look at. Let me take a quick look here. So as I scroll down through the plan, you're going to come to about four or five pages that say, here are the goals, here's the city's general goals, because this is what we're going to work on. So within the PDF, about page 69, numbered page, probably about 64. You have one page worth of land use goals. And then you've got a number of policies and this is about four pages long. And this is what we're going to work on with you. So what we're going to do is we're going to take that task force information and we're going to start to rework, rethink, review these goals and these policies. So at the next meeting, we're going to focus in on these pages. So starting on about page 68 to about 74, we're going to walk through these and then we're going to ask you, based on what you read in the task force information, based on what you know as a resident of the community, based on yourself as a commissioner, do we need to adjust these? How do we need to adjust these? What are we missing? What do we need to add?
So where does that start off, 64?
Let's ask.
The, where does it start? You said 64 to 74, 60 what to 74?
64, Eric. So land use goals. And then the policies are right behind it, Eric. And that's where we're going to start in. Through about 68, Eric. About five pages.
So is that, are we planning to meet next month, kind of same time, the first Tuesday at four? Okay.
You're, if you're willing to do that, I think it it's better for you to focus just on this, if you guys are okay with that.
Yes, so in essence, this is our homework for the next month.
I didn't even have to say it, right? Yeah, that is your homework for the for the next month. So before the next meeting, do take a look at those those goals, those policies. Look at the maps. What's changed, what didn't develop like we thought it might 20 years ago? Or gee, that's actually pretty spot on or, you know, whatever it might be. Look at your current plan and then just kind of in the back of your mind, start thinking about what you may have seen come from the task force. And we're going to do, we're going to rewrite these sections is basically what we're going to do. To what degree we change them is up to you. That make sense? Nick, did I miss anything?
I think you pretty well got it, Brian.
Well, we
I don't think so. We appreciate you giving us the framework for how to go, you know, with the next steps. So we'll kind of check in with Eric or Noel and see if we can make sure that our homework is relayed to the other commissioners who couldn't be here or anyone who can't come to the next meeting, if they still can provide some input. So they still can, you know, be part of the process, even if they can't come to the next meeting, so. Yes, any, any other questions or anything at this point? Eric, do you have any feedback? I saw you go off mute.
No, I'm just saying thanks for everyone for participating. Good discussion and we'll see if we can pick it back up next time.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, everyone. I guess, do we need a motion to adjourn then?
I would. Moved.
Okay.
Second by Gilbert.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.